So, and see what's going on? Or remind you?
If we share the charity. Not at all, not at all.
Really?
I'd like to call it. Are we going to be in the Tracy City Council or February 26th?
It's a purple. I'm trying to get on.
You stand to do the question.
To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We've been blessed.
They're memorized by about an hour.
Really? Stand right here, stand?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Minnesota and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Tracy and do faithfully discharge the duties revolving upon you as member of City Council and of the City of Tracy to the best of your judgment and ability?
I do.
Welcome, applause.
There you go. I know it's gonna have to say all that. Does we have approval of the minutes? Do we have any corrections to the minutes as they are written?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve first and second, or are they all the same? Oh, but that, everybody's... All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we have the approval of the agenda.
Ms. Mary, I have one addition, thirteen C, resolution 2018-13 for the support of Lyon County's Opportunity Zone applications, second series. This is something Jeff will cover from the EDA.
That change?
No, approval wasn't made.
Second then?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries, and we have an identity of any conference members tonight? And anything from the public that's not on the agenda? The public hearing, we can figure it out. I don't want the public hearing to figure it out. On the reports?
Alright, thank you. In the packet there is a memo from us about the Phase Three project and some next steps that can be taken to give us the best chance of being able to get in the ground in 2019. RD has indicated they're gonna try to fast-track approval of the PER. So, they're thinking about thirty days is when we'll see comments, and then hopefully they'll, it'll be a quick process to go back and forth and kinda get the full scope of Phase Three A, we're calling it, which is basically Third Street and then some side streets. We had discussed that last summer. So, to keep things going, there are three things that we could do, and then all these costs would be reimbursable once a funding package is approved by rural development. And, you know, they don't, they don't pay you back anyway until the first construction draw. So, either way, it's money that the city needs to front, but it will be reimbursable if a Phase Three project goes. So, the three things to, that could be done now to get further down the road here. Private service televising, about twenty percent of the services, we, we need to know what's going on for design. They're kind of, if you recall in the last project, we had a lot of what we called rogue services, sanitary services that were shared, went under neighbors' houses, wound this way and that, and we needed to televise them, and then they put a beacon in the camera, marked it on the surface so that we could survey it and figure out where exactly they were. Most of them in this phase, we know where they are, but there's about twenty percent of them or so we need to verify to be able to design where we need to put the mains. The rest of them, we still wanna televise 'cause we're looking for illegal footing drain connections or cracked service pipe, things that are noncompliant with city ordinance and allowing groundwater into the sanitary system. So, either way, we wanna get them all televised as far ahead of construction as possible to let people know if they do need to make a correction, they'll have more time to plan for that. So, the private service televising, Empire Pipe Services did it last time, and they gave us some updated pricing, were estimated at about $33,000 to televise approximately 111, I believe it was, services. The next one is the initial design survey, which is where our crews would go out and, you know, do the topographic survey that you need for design, get existing graves, all the existing surface and subsurface features that we use as the basis for design. And then the geotechnical investigation, AET gave us a proposal for 6,800 to do soil borings and let us know what the subsurface conditions are of soils, and then also, if it comes to it, hopefully it won't during the PER phase, but sometimes in the past we've had to kinda defend our proposed pavement section to rural development, basically have to show them that we're not, we're not adding the Taj Mahal compared to what was there, so we have to kinda justify that, we're replacing what's there, and that's what the soil borings will show us. So, those are three things that, I guess, the next steps, the next logical steps to take to keep things moving forward and put us in a position for 2019 construction. So, any, I know Coo and Councilman Shones, you, you know, haven't been involved very, in very much detail with this, so I've offered it to other, you know, new council members. If you ever want, sit down, we could come down, come to town and kinda give an update on what this project has been and where it's going and what the thought process is, so feel free to reach out with, for that.
Thank you.
So, you know, I have one question to say.
Yeah.
So, does rural development, like, I thought one time it said that you only can get so much from them, like, the grants and the law.
Yes, and there's, there's a maximum amount of grant you can get on a project, which in general, their overall max is like seventy-five percent grant, which in practice, I don't think the city would even be eligible for because that's for, you know, the extremely poor communities typical, but even in practice, they typically only max out about thirty percent. But what we're doing, just because of the amount of money available, they rarely give anything over thirty percent. But what we're doing by looking at all of Phase Three, which is, I think it was ten or twelve different sub-phases, which were, were lettering basically, so this first, First Third Street area is Phase Three A, we're calling it, we looked at cost estimates for, for all of those, and the potential costs for both sewer, water storm, and then just what they'd call ineligible, meaning it's not, it's not directly related to the improvements of one of those utilities, but say it's curb and gutter outside of what the trench width would be, that would be a city cost, rural development doesn't necessarily pay for that if it isn't like right over the utility trench. Anyway, we look at all those, and that, that's what they use to underwrite, so instead of, instead of paying for this next phase, just issuing loan-only dollars, and then the next one, loan only, loan only, because if it was a standalone project, that's probably what you would get, and then all of a sudden you get to the last one, and your maximum affordability in terms of like debt services maxed out, then they can't front it, or they can't load those last few phases with grant only because then they run into their own maximum per project. So, what they're trying to do is take some, knowing that these projects are gonna happen in the future, these other phases, they're taking pieces of this grant and putting it with every single phase, so we don't all of a sudden run into some max and lose out on grants money that could've been experienced. So, it's, I don't know what word to use, fortunate, generous, but it's good that they're doing that and not, and not making you only get a loan, and then at the end, turns out you reach some max and you don't get as much grant money as if you maybe had one, done one huge project, which is quite an undertaking, obviously. Was that a rambling enough explanation? Does that, that make sense?
Does it have like a cap, like the Tracy, you know, the City of Tracy can't, doesn't have a cap like that you need it, that's where every one project after another one?
In terms of, like, a flat dollar amount, you mean?
Yeah.
I don't believe so, no, no. So, they, they've appreciated the way we're going about this, and, you know, have asked other questions even about the subsequent phases, even though we're not necessarily asking for that money now, they wanna get a good handle on what's coming down the pipeline, so they're, they're planning for it.
The PER is being written to cover Phase Three A through Z, then?
Yeah, B and later on is quite a bit higher level. It's more planning estimates, and Phase, and then Phase Three A, we're calling Three A, and then there's actually a potential, there's some spots in town that are good candidates for lining. If funding is available, we would propose to include that in Three A, 'cause it doesn't really, some of the other phases you have to do in a certain order because of depth and things, but if you're just lining, existing pipe, rehabilitating it, if the money's there, we can do it at any time. But yeah, we're, so in the PER, we have estimates for all these different phases, but then we're saying, but we're asking for, right now, we're asking for Three A and this lining.
And the funding's gonna be RD grant and RD loans, or are there gonna be bonds required?
Uh, there'll be RD grant and loan, and then potentially state with grant as well. So, I talked with the Rural Development Program Director last week, and that, he was asking some, me some more specific questions, made sure he understood what we're asking for in the PER, and they're working with the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority and the, and seeing if there's anything on the bonding bill too. But as far as city money and city bonds, there will be some ineligible portions of the project, just like there was on Phase One.
Right.
And you'll likely need some sort of interim or temporary bonding, because like I, like I said earlier, it's, the way RD's funds work is, the city needs to pay for all the upfront costs, and then it can't make any draws on any previous expenses until that first construction. So, basically after the first month of construction, when the contractor asks for their first payment, that's when everything else, our fees, televising, the geotechnical report, bunch of other things, if there is any land or easement that need to be purchased, we don't foresee any on this phase. All that stuff, you guys need to pay for upfront, and then once that first pay application comes in from the contractor, that's when you can get reimbursement for that. That's how it worked on Phase One, right, or did they?
Yeah, when we, it was the start of Phase Two on most of it, for like the smoke testing and all that from back years ago, that finally got reimbursed here now, so, I mean, you sit on it for a while, but it does come back. I mean, either way, you're paying for it.
Yeah. And these ones, now we're into the utility phases, and I know the first two phases took quite a while to finally get in the ground, but Phase One, everyone was, when I say everyone, I mean, you know, the state and rural development, they were all in agreement on that one pretty early on. It was the treatment, where we're gonna put these ponds, and for the longest time, those two were married, and then finally rural development said, okay, we can split them, we agree on the utilities, that's not gonna change, no matter what happens with the treatment site, we know we're gonna do this part in town, let's go ahead and do that. And then Phase Two finally, finally got going, should be mostly wrapped up this year.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so if, I guess what we're looking for obviously is direction to move forward, one or any one of these three or all of them, just so we can keep things moving. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, you wanna go?
You wanna take any action on this one?
Do we, do you wanna do that now, or do we, is that what you want now, tonight?
Doesn't need a resolution, just a...
Just approval.
Just approval.
Yeah, I think just a motion.
I would make a motion to go ahead and give the approval to proceed for Phase Three A for the televising, design survey, and field test.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
We'll help Shane, and we'll put together kind of a memo to send out to these property owners, so they're not all of a sudden getting a knock on their door from the televising company to let them know, you know, what we know so far anyway, that we're gonna start looking into this.
When do you plan on starting on the television?
I think that we talked to him on the way here, he was actually on vacation until today, so we tried to catch up and get some numbers verified, but they prefer to do as much as they can in the winter here because their busy time is, is the summer, but I think it'll start right away, and we'll, we'll let them know which are the more critical for us from a design standpoint, hopefully they'll focus on those.
Do homeowners need to do anything, or do they come, do they do it from the house in?
Yeah, they're gonna do them from the house in. They, they have a lateral launch device, but this was a segment that we had televised last year, or sixteen, I believe it was, and a lot of these mains, they couldn't even get in, and with the lateral launch, you need to get in the main and then shoot up the service, and a lot of these mains are in such poor condition, they couldn't even get in, so I think they're planning on doing all of them from the house. Yeah, so they'll have to set up appointments, and I'm sure the property owners will wanna be there, and, yeah.
Just like you said, just so people know when all of a sudden there's a knock at the door.
Right, right.
Is the ground not too frozen either?
The televising?
Yeah. Can you get in there?
It's all within the pipes.
So, they'll like go through a floor drain, just stick a push camera through.
Oh, that's all they do then?
Yeah, so, every once in a while, they'll maybe have to pull a toilet or something, if there's no clean out or something that they can access, otherwise, yep, yep.
If they do pull a toilet, they have plumbers doing it, so.
Right, right. Thanks.
Excuse me, do you have a business card?
Yeah. Is this department head, or is this kit? Lots of things going on, I've actually had, last week was rather busy as far as fire calls went. All the firemen are doing their first responder refresher right now for four-hour nights to keep current on that. We have a new fireman getting on first Monday in February, John Zhong is his name. Other than that, basic day-to-day stuff going on, end-of-the-year stuff's done, turned in. Think, next couple weeks Shane and I are gonna get through the capital improvements for the fire department, get them up to date, so that'll be in front of you here shortly. Other than that, I really don't know a lot. Any questions for me? Perfect, thank you.
I don't have anything for you other than my activity report, if you have any questions on that.
You good, thanks.
Okay, I just wanna highlight a couple things on my report. I've been working on our annual report to state library services, this is something we have to do every year. We report everything from circulation to attendance at programs, number of programs, all our financial data will all be on there, it'll go before, before the library board this week. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about a program that we have coming up on March 26th, we'll have an antiques appraisal program, and so we'll be doing sign-ups for that, and because of that, I won't be here for the meeting on the 26th, so you'll still get a report from me in writing. And then, did you want me to talk a little bit now about the Plum Creek Joint Powers Agreement that's on your agenda a little bit later on, or do you want me to talk about it then?
Well, she's there.
Okay. So, this is something that we have been working on, trying to get updated, our last agreement dates to 2001, so it's long overdue for this to get done. I realize that the council did approve this agreement, it's probably been a little over a year ago now, and some of the councils or counties suggested changes, so we went back to the drawing board, and now we're hoping to finally get this approved. So, basically, this agreement is between all of the counties and cities and library boards that are in the Plum Creek Library System. We have about twenty libraries in the system, and a couple of those have branches also. And I think it just summarizes it really well, if you see the purpose, we share materials and resources, collective purchasing, advocating, and then sharing, working on programming and collections. And the two main things that I feel are important are the shared library system, that's our catalog that we all use, and our delivery system, that's how we get delivery, we share items twice a week. We get things in from other libraries and send things out to others, so I don't know if anyone has any questions on this. I realize it's, it's hard to completely understand unless you're living it, but I, I can try to answer any questions the best that I can, otherwise, it's my recommendation that you go ahead and approve this, and I anticipate that the library board will also approve and sign it this week.
Did you have any concerns at all, Val?
I do not. I've gone through it several times, we had a committee of librarians who worked on, on this, and I'm confident that they, that they did a really, really good job, so.
Do you need us to do something about the agreement today, or do we wait until after the library board has done?
You can go ahead and approve it. All of the different boards and councils and counties have to do it individually, so it wouldn't be, say, the library board approving it and then recommending that you approve it. Basically, I'm recommending to you and to the library board that you approve it. Yep, Lyon County also approved it, so.
Do we have a motion to approve it?
We don't yet, but I'll make a motion to approve it.
Perfect, do we have a second?
I'll second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a, do you have a signature page for that, Pam?
I don't yet, I usually don't get it till the end.
Okay, so then if you just wanna, so then we'll just take care of that later. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Jeff, would you like to go?
Sure.
I wanna thank Shane and Diane for getting that resolution later that we're gonna talk about, and I gave that to them about 3:30 this afternoon, so they, I appreciate you getting on that. Just an update from the EDA, I'm just gonna go through the list, I think you've all got it in front of you also, but the Third Street Townhomes, or the fourplexes over there, the, you'll be voting on that, I think, on the 26th to go through. Once that does go through, that'll be a, I'm just gonna give an estimate through, after realtor's costs and other costs that we've incurred, right around $195,000, that'll be coming to the EDA city, so that'll be a nice money to be able to use in a lot of other projects, so. But that should get it pretty close there, that hopefully will all be taken care of by the end of, end of March now. Just to, that'd be the last time you'll see the Masonic Building Demolition Project on there, working with Deed a little bit, and I know Dan was working with them a little bit, just to get a couple of pieces of paperwork that I was really unfamiliar with, trying to get it all taken care of, so that should be the last time, that should be on there. Lewis Drug on there, the opening went smooth, and just through the, the owner and employees out there, it's, it's, they're busier and all get out compared to what they are up here, they've got so many new, new prescriptions and everything coming in, so it was, it was an extremely good move to go out there. Hospice is, you know, they got the groundwork done and all that, but it's, they're looking for their capital campaign to get up another $100,000, and then they'll start, they still think that they will be able to do that right around, hopefully, the first part of May or June, they think they're gonna be able to get that taken care of, they're hoping anyway, working with a NATE over there on that, and just trying to get updated on that. We can skip the tax abatement for now. The Red Rooster site, you'll see a sign up in front of the Red Rooster here pretty quick through the Tracy Development Corp., who I've been working pretty closely with just to, you know, it's part of the EDA's job to get people to come into, whether it's a building owned by a public entity, or a private or nonprofit or whatever, so I'm, I'm doing a lot of work on trying to get the right fit for that location down there, I've got tons and tons of ideas. So, the demo loan program will be coming up here in the spring, be starting, and there's already one applicant for the demo loan program, and what that is, is if you don't remember, it is going to be if you've got a house in town that, that's dilapidated, it's not, you're not gonna be able to move anybody, and it's not worth fixing, so the EDA's gonna take part in borrowing as much as, I believe, seventy-five percent of what it costs to demo, demo the, the property itself. So, I think that's a good program, 'cause we've got plenty of those, I've got a, I did a housing study on my own, just going up and down the streets, and, and there's plenty of those houses here in, in town that we need to get rid of, and if we can't do anything with them, we gotta do something with them because they just can't sit there. So, that'd be another thing I'm working on. The Mon Community and Cultural Center is, is something that I believe that's going to take shape this year. I know we have a party that would like to come here from that community and, and actually present to the city council and to the EDA, we're getting that arranged, hopefully, hopefully in March or April, where she can come up here and, and, and just talk to everybody about where, what direction they would like to go. And then the last one I've got on the list here is the Lights and Beyond Building was, through the EDA, was, was helped purchase by a group out of Marshall and out of Nicollet, Minnesota. Two parties came together and bought it, and Lights and Beyond will be open in two weeks. So, that'll be going on uptown, plus there's a couple of things that are going on uptown that I can report on, maybe, maybe the next time. So, there's lots and lots going on, lots of good things.
Good, thank you.
Questions, nothing?
That's all, you Shane.
Am I ready?
Your moment.
So, just kinda summarize this, if you had a chance to read my report. Just been doing some maintenance at the shop, and of course, we're thinking positive and starting with lawnmower maintenance here the last few weeks, so. We had a short meeting with Minnesota Energy, those ugly regular station, regulator stations around town are going bye-bye this summer, so I figured I'd pass that along to you. There's four small ones, the only thing that'll be, only one that'll be left would be the new one they put up by the elevator. The rest of them, like on the corner of center and fourteen, those two will be gone, there's one on Sixth Street, and there's one in the alley not too far from the fire hall, so. Getting ready, lining some stuff up for the pool, getting lifeguards trained, and that with Shannon. We had a meeting today with the airport, review the master plan, you have some stuff in your next packet here for the first March meeting on that. Well Six, they're getting that repaired, hopefully in the next week, get that back up to capacity again. It's kind of been falling, falling downhill on the performance the last year, so they decided it's time to pull. Other than that, moving snow, last few days, quite a bit, and just doing some year-end and beginning of the year, organization getting permits and reports done for various agencies, so. You have any questions?
I'd just like to say thank you and pass on to people for a great job on the snow over this week, I mean, Sunday morning, church paralyzing, what about falling to grocery and things, appreciate it.
I will pass the message on.
Yeah, and I have one question I need to ask you, and see what y'all think of that, but you know how, like, every boss is like, if somebody can't come in, they kind of fill in, you know? So, would it not be a good idea for Shannon to have, like, lifeguard training? So would it not be a good idea for Shannon to have, like, lifeguard trained? So if they ever run into that situation, like, remember how last year they couldn't, like, have the pool open, they didn't have enough lifeguards? What do you think of that?
Something they're empowered. An assistant manager would have to work then, you know, she's right.
But it might be easier to have an assistant manager work for her to do that, and somebody cover a lifeguard, so they can still have the pool open. You know what I mean? You remember last year when they did that?
Yeah, I know towards the end it gets rough because they have all the camps and everything, so.
I was just thinking about that today, I wonder...
I could ask her.
Maybe you're the assistant.
Just one of the managers.
One of them. Shall we move on to the city council, city administrator, search for the timeline?
So in your packets, you'll have a memo from Wendell to the council, and also the timeline, which is the same timeline that I gave out at the last meeting, so. For your review.
At the last meeting, Dave, you had questioned if the council should relook at what we had set for guidelines and that for applicants. Is that something we...
Did you send them back? Or do we have a copy of that still?
I haven't. I looked for his ad online, I couldn't find it, so I've never...
Because now would be the time, if the ads are going to go out in April, if I remember the timeline correctly, now would be the time we'd want to look at what we said we wanted for our qualifications and that, and see if we wanted to differ from it, or keep it the same, or what?
Exactly, with that, five to seven?
Yeah.
Possible right now.
But it could be five to seven. They're going to want $150,000 because of the qualifications that were set.
Yep.
Well, I don't know about all the taxpayers, but I don't know if they're going to want us paying $150,000 salary. And so I don't personally know. I was going to go back in old minutes to kind of look, and then I thought, well, if he's going to be running the ad, he should have that pretty readily available to pop it back to us to relook at it.
I have... I might be able to find the original ad, but I know he revamped that after we brought him aboard.
I'd say if we can get his ad and have him just send it back, then we can look at it next meeting and see if we have tweaks that we want to do to it.
Thank you.
The other question last time was if they reached out to folks and said...
That applied before.
That applied, and they didn't meet the...
Liaisoning.
Yeah. An answer up there.
I called Diane today to ask her too, because I was questioning my memory on this, it's like, we're not paying... We're only paying him for advertising, or what is it that we're actually paying him?
Travel and...
Travel, his lodging per diem.
Lodging, it becomes here, right? He's not going anywhere.
His costs are minimal.
Until we get to, like, the interview stage. I'm assuming if he's going to be involved in the interviews?
He sent them to us.
Oh, okay.
Honestly, I still question what he's actually doing.
Weeding out.
Put a professional eye on the resume instead of... Possibly. He's going to drop the pool candidates and say, "They told me they want this. These people are qualified for that," and then he's going to set up a small interview council, the council members, right?
And weed it down to six, I thought.
Yeah, and then weed it down to two or three, and then do the name. But it's... It's a minimal experience.
Do we have to do anything with this timeline? Or is this just for information? Because we already approved it last week, right?
Just information.
It wasn't approved. You could table it and wait on these items for next meeting if you want, or however you want to proceed.
How does that timeline fit with your schedule, Shane? Because that's rolling into that.
I know I'm leaving for a week to go fishing in June.
Oh, no, you're not.
Well, okay, the big question is you're coming back.
Unless someone can sign checks when I leave. So that's my main thing right now, because you don't have the pool. I can always shoot out for a few days because Kim plans on coming back next week, so that's going to alleviate.
Well, let me rephrase the setup. And when you get to the point where you think an intern would help, we let the council go.
Yeah, I can do that. My hair's gone.
And then once he's burned out and go fishing and not coming back, I...
Yeah. Leaving the country, too.
Yeah.
Well, now he's scaring us.
Okay, I'll get that information for you.
Hey, we'll table that until the next time, I think. Do you want to help us with the fire department road contract?
I'm here to answer any questions you have.
We just need to go with it.
Whatever. If you have any questions, I'm sure I'll...
You want to get it back now, Shane, and help me to do it?
Well, I can, or Dale can, or... What are you looking for? Just what we've done in the past?
Just a little history as to why it's here, sort of ways on the same sheet, you can communicate with the public, so we're...
You can explain it better than I can.
So around the first of the year, the city sends out rural contracts. Shane had called and asked if I could come visit with him and Diane. They were trying to get the contracts sent out. As we started looking through some stuff back in 2012, the league had sent out, I believe in 2011, the formula for rural township contracts. The council at that time said that they wanted the fire department to go ahead and complete the formula and come up with a adequate fee schedule for billing for rural townships. At that time, we did go through and implement, fill out the formula, come up with a rate, set up a 10-year plan. It was presented to the council. The council decided they wanted to move ahead forward with it. A few years after that, there was some minor conflict going on in regards to it, and the council had decided at that time that they wished, or that they were... The council and administrator were going to take over the township contract portion. Now, to current, there was some documents that we were having a hard time locating, that we were able to, you know, relocate and put together, I guess, the spreadsheet you have in front of you that shows kind of what the past was, the present is, and what the future was based off what we were supposed to do. At this time, we're obviously are behind what we were supposed to be charging, and I guess how we get to where we agreed in 2012 that we were going to be is up to you guys. Is that kind of a good blanket?
It's a good synopsis.
So in 2012 is when this state...
2011.
2011 is when the state came out with the recommendation.
The League of Minnesota Cities came out.
They came out with the recommendation, but it was not a mandate.
It was not a mandate.
The recommendation to help cover...
The recommendation was because there was... The city as an entity was billing for something without a fee schedule or a formula at how they were arriving, at how they were going to charge.
So there can be a big discrepancy from city to city if we don't follow this recommendation.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. City A, A, B, and C could have followed the recommendation, and everyone else could have decided... Could have chose not to. Now, to be known, we did not follow the formula to a T. Following the formula to a T put us at, it was between $1,100 and $1,200, my memory doesn't correct me, or doesn't come to me that far back, but it was between $1,100 to $1,200 a section. At that time, it was looked at with a group of fire chiefs in the county, and there was some changes made to the formula, putting it at a cap of right around $644 total. In the... I believe at that time, we actually stretched it out 12 years to get from where everyone was at to that number. It was kind of agreed at a 15% increase until we hit that point. Then, once that point was hit, it would level off, maybe a cost of living increase, or, you know, drop down to that 1% to 3% increase per year. Was the intention in 2012.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, what we're looking at is the townships pay the city to provide the fire services to their homes, their properties, whatever.
Correct.
The taxpayers pay the city for the fire services.
Correct.
And when I look at this graph that was included in the packet, it looks like the taxpayers are pulling quite a large percentage of the cost.
Historically, historically, we have approximately 60% of our calls are based in the rural Historically, approximately 20% of the fire department's budget is made up from rural township rates. Two total separate entities. We're still one fire department, two total sets of different needs. I mean, fighting a fire in the city limits of Tracy, I need two trucks, and we hook up two hydrants that run off the water tower. Fighting a fire out in the country, we have to haul the water. We're also hauling the water 90% of the time from the hydrants, from the water tower that the city's providing as well. We don't really have cornfield, bean field, grass fires in the city limits of Tracy. We can't fight a cornfield fire with our large pump truck or our large tankers during the spring and fall, especially when it's wet, because they'll be stuck before we get five feet into the field. So, yes, I mean, the city taxpayers are paying for a large amount of equipment that does not need to be used, but is also protecting... That is used for protecting the rural community.
Which I feel is a vital part of our community.
Very much agree.
I mean, the rural part is, but I think what the state, if I have done a little bit of my homework correctly here, what the state was trying to do was...
I'm going to correct you with the League of Cities.
Now, the League of Cities, now I wrote that down so I would quit saying the state. The League of Cities was trying to do was maybe to try to even it out a little more, maybe not make it 50-50, but to try to even it out that the city taxpayers weren't carrying the bulk of the load for the whole diverse community.
The big issue in 2012 was the amount of testing requirements, training, the amount of dollars that the city was putting into the fire department to help disperse that out, you know, because not only is it, you know, we have to have these special pieces of equipment that we use only in the rural fire service, but to help cover some of the costs for operating the fire department as well, because you're getting the same amount of firemen, whether it's in town or out of town. I mean, when the pager goes off, the same people show up, whether we're going downtown Tracy, or whether we're going 10 miles north of Tracy. So I think the whole theory was to try to help, you know, generate a little bit of revenue towards helping manage and operate the fire department and do it in a safe, and I don't know, let's say, so we're following the majority of the life safety rules that we have to follow. You know, service and testing our life safety equipment, like our air packs, our turnout gear, our fire trucks, our, you know, our main engine trucks, so that when we're going into a building, not only are we not liable for the fact of something does break, you know, that we didn't do our due diligence in upkeeping the equipment and testing the equipment, but we're also protecting our volunteer firefighters, giving them a little bit of a safety blanket, knowing that, you know, a third party is coming in here each and every year, and they're tearing apart every air pack that we have. And for those of you that have never seen an air pack, it's a 15-minute process just to take the mask apart and put it together. That doesn't include any of the testing of it, and they have a mannequin head that they set on there, and they put the mask on, and they go through all the working operations of the air pack, all the alarms, all the safety features, all the bypasses, all the connections for a RIT connection or for a trapped firefighter. You know, and that's just this one expense, is that. The company that comes in and tests our trucks is here for... It was last year, they were here for three days. And that's not the engine that drives the truck, the brakes, any of that, that's all done through the public works. That is just the pump on the truck. They go through every valve, they go through every switch, every control, they go through and completely service, inspect it, and then they take the truck out, and it has to pass a pump test to be rated so that, A, so that, quote unquote, "It's not going to break down during a fire," but also them tests save the taxpayers of the city and of the immediate rural community by lowering our ISO rating, which helps everyone's insurance get a lower insurance premium.
I mean, I understand this is a touchy subject because we're talking...
This is a very touchy subject.
Money for people. When you're talking per section rate, that's not farmland acreage type.
It's per section, whether your section has four farmhouses and a huge cattle operation, or whether it's all CRP land, whether it's all cornfield. It's a flat rate per section, which is why, when that formula came out between $1,100 and $1,200, we actually took all the farmland, all the valuations of the farmland out, which is what got us down to the $644 per section back in 2012.
I feel like I'm monopolizing the discussion here.
I feel like you're targeting me right now.
No, I'm not. I'm trying to make sure I understand it, and people that are watching it now or watching it in the future, because people that live out in the country might not be getting this, but when they hear we're talking about maybe raising our rate to them to provide fire services, they're going to go and watch the recording, and I want them to kind of have some of the background to know when we make a decision, why we're making the decision we are making and what it's based on. So by no means am I trying to target you...
And I appreciate that we're getting it all out there.
Because it's not you, Dale, it's us.
And...
It's us.
Exactly. Six years ago, when this was taken away from the fire chief and to be handled by the city, six or seven years ago now, everything was pretty much formally decided that here's the schedule we're going to go off of, and this is what we're going to charge. And, you know, a lot of things have changed in the last five or six years. People come, people go, you know. So it, I mean, it ultimately does fall back to, at no point in time is it ever my decision what you're charging. It is purely up to the council what they decide to do.
Well, and ultimately, the council decided back in 2012 or '13 that this was it, so really, all we have to do is either say we're going to continue this, and we have to kind of decide what we're going to do with the little void when we had turnover and the city administrator, so a letter wasn't sent and everything, but otherwise, this was already decided by a previous council, as far as I'm concerned.
True.
And unless we want to go against what a previous council decided, I guess...
The only other option you would have is, you know, to open it back up, to do the formula again. I'm not asking you to do that by any... That was really, at least, probably a week and a half of my life, and again, it's going to come back way higher than where we're ever projected to get on that chart if we were to go do it, you know, fully by the league's policy. And again, that formula was arrived from the League of Minnesota Cities and the Township Association, sat down together and formulated that. It wasn't just the league who represents the Minnesota... It wasn't just the league who represents the municipality saying, "Hey, this looks good," and mailing it out. I mean, they, they spent some time in there, and I do believe there was a packet that went around that explained how they did the, how they arrived at the formula.
The departments, Dale, that agreed to do this, that you've got the other panel agreed on this formula and this track, the bulk of them are on schedule, we're behind? Is that...
There was, I think, one of the departments had a, in a rush issue where it was 398 or 389, and they mixed up two of the numbers, you know.
But they're pretty much, they didn't...
They were, they were off by 10 or 11 dollars at nine, yeah, somewhere in there. Otherwise, everyone else that did this, which is mainly to the north of us, that did this is on track for it. At the chiefs meeting we hosted here in April last year, there are other, in our, in our region now, and again, our region kind of is goofy. Lyon County is supposed to be in the region above us, but the line is actually Highway 14, and being all the city offices are south of Highway 14, we're in the region, we're on the very north end of our region. There are a handful of departments in, actually, I believe there's eight departments in our region, which is now 54 fire departments, that are using the formula or something similar to it, or where their rates are comparable to the rates that the formula came up with Ultimately, it, it comes down to it's an expensive operation to own. And short of cutting corners on life safety for the people we're protecting, or for the firemen that are providing the service, or cutting corners on equipment, which, I mean, everybody in here owns a snow shovel, they never wanna have to use it, but when they need it, they're glad they have it. You know, our, our toolbox or toy box is, you know, every tool in that rescue truck, we train on three, four times a year. Every time we train on them and we put them away, we hope we never open, never have to take them out again until another training. But when we take them out, they have to work. I mean, the, the sickest feeling in the world as a parent is standing there when your child is sick, or your child is hurt, and not knowing what to do. You know, put that to an emergency situation where somebody's stuck in a grain bin, or somebody's pinned in a vehicle, and you show up and, "Oh yeah, this thing's 30 years old and doesn't run," or "this thing won't start," or, you know, technology and extrication tools with the technology and vehicles out there nowadays. I mean, every time, buying a set of jaws is like buying a computer. By the time it actually gets to the fire hall, there's a new style of vehicle out, and this thing's barely able to cut through it. So...
What's the next step? Is it obvious enough to say?
So, reading that, I need to go back where I wanted. The per section rate for the last calendar year is 338? Do we collect that, or...
Last year's premiums were all collected.
Yeah.
I'll just look in here, the, looks like the highest section township is Amarette. They have 35 sections. To go from the 338 we're at now to the 447, you're looking at $3,815. So, that'll be the worst hit township.
And nothing changes till, essentially till 2019?
No. The contract we're sending out right now takes effect May 1st.
May 1st, okay.
Rural contracts run May 1st to May 1st. In 2012, what was decided was, May 1st, a township would hand in their contract, and at the first council meeting in May, the administrator, the mayor, and the fire chief would sign them. There's two copies. One copy would get mailed back with a letter of intent explaining what the next year's rates were gonna be, and also at what meetings would be budget meetings for anybody who wanted to come and voice any concerns or thoughts or issues.
Got it.
And if you look through the spreadsheet, you know, it's, there's been a few years where it was doubled, a few years, you know, that it went up, and then there was, you know, I don't know, it just hasn't been consistent.
I'm just concerned about that large of a jump for the, that year. Going from the 338 to the 447, that's like a 32% increase. And that's because we missed a, a increase in there.
Well, and as you look through the sheet, there's been a few years where increases were missed, so, yes.
You know, after that...
And I agree with you, 30, 30, you know, that 32% is a, is a very large number.
I, I guess I just have a concern going up that much because of something, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, it was overturn of administration and stuff like that, it, it was missed. I mean, I'm not gonna blame Shane, you know, he wasn't the administrator.
Better than blaming me, but...
Well, we can't blame you. It's a council administrator thing. And that's where people need to remember, it isn't you. It is council administrator. And so, I just have a problem with jumping to the 32% because of something that is our fault. But I'd rather see it extend out one more year, because it is, it's, it's at least getting it up there. But I would like to see it extend out to, instead of to 2020, to maybe 2021, where we could stay with that 15% that was agreed on by the original council that did this. Because then we're not really going against the past council, but we're also not killing the, the townships. But I'd like to also see the township's percentage increasing up past the 20% when they're having 60% of the calls, and the city taxpayers picking up the rest of it. I'd like to see that balance out. I know my country friends probably are not gonna be happy with me, but hopefully my town friends will be a little happy with me. But I hope they see the reason of trying to have them pay a little fair share of their part of the department. And I agree, I want the quality of department we have.
And, and that's the key thing there, is, you know, you as a council decide what you want as a quality of a department, and, and what you want your department to do. And I mean, that's all based upon my budget requests and, you know, my capital improvements requests, as far as what you, what you want and what you expect from your fire department. So, you know, if that is what you want from, from the fire department for services, what we're offering right now, then the next option would be to, like you said, to try to get that, that rate increased.
So, what were you thinking for a, for a number?
Well, I'd have to, I forgot my phone at home. I don't have my calculator. I did this math at home.
Just to verify though, they did collect 338 section for 2017?
Yeah.
Well, if you do your 15%, like you said, that takes it up to 388, or 389.
Oh yeah, because that's on that bottom, the projected rate.
That's what it should've been for last year.
That's what it should've been. And that's why I'm saying, just push it back a year. We get back on track by going to the 389 this year.
And then 447 the next?
Yep. And then the, and just follow out on that projected rate.
Just what you do is push the bottom of the end rate out one year.
Out one year.
That works for me, I mean, it's...
We're getting to where we need to be.
The only, the only discussion that lies within that was the group of fire chiefs that went through the time and did the formula. All with the backing of their cities at that time, all agreed that they were gonna be at this rate, so that we weren't competing against each other. So, if we are gonna do that, just a simple statement that we're not going to add sections, take sections away from other fire departments that are in an unreasonable response area, so we're not bidding, we're not using dollars, you know, for life safety issues. We're not putting the dollar...
And now, is that our decision as to if we add sections or not, if people come to us?
In past precedents, all this has been fire chief, when it came to the administrator and the council. You know, that part was never discussed as far as what it is. Right now, the contract is filled out, the contract is sent to the city, and then, once we send in the contract, we update the sections with the county. I just don't wanna see us being 20% behind a neighboring department to where that's maybe already on a, a border, a northern, just use a northern borderline, where a township comes in and says, "Hey, you're 60 bucks less than these guys, you're gonna call them for help anyway, because you're out in the country, we're gonna need multiple organizations." I don't wanna see the city of Tracy trying to pick up 10 sections that puts us another five miles north of where we're already going, because they can get there quicker.
But we can control that, right?
We can, we can control that.
We can decline their requests.
Yes.
So, then we can protect ourselves that way, too.
Correct. Whether, whether it stays that I decline it and you guys back me, or whether you want me to bring it to you guys, I just don't wanna see us grow our area to where we're not, we're not serving effectively.
Then we use, lose the quality that we're just saying we wanna keep.
Then you lose the quality.
So, that would go against what we wanna do, so...
Or, or we get so far spread out, if there was multiple calls at one time, that it's unmanageable.
To simplify things, and I'll take you off the odds a little bit, if, if the council steps up and takes care of setting the rates, and the decisions as the fire coverage areas and getting contracts in and out, goes back to the fire chief, that, and that, if the letter of intent is coming from the council, not from the fire chief, this is what's gonna cost for, for our coverage and interest?
And if we actually, resolution or motion to whatever we're gonna do for the next five years, or 10 years, or however long you guys wanna do it, if we actually had something like that, that was etched in stone, you know, this conversation probably wouldn't be happening right now.
So, would you be willing to handle that end of it then?
Sure.
And then all the, all the complaining could come to that point, even talk to the Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, we need to make a new motion and so on?
I do, I do think if you decide to do more than the 15% increase, that possibly having a special meeting explaining what's going on, you know, because in, in years past, we used to, they picked up the contracts at the February, the February meeting at the fire hall, where we went through the fire hall, did a, a brief tour, showed, you know, when CHS bought us all the rescue equipment for grain bin rescues, we showed that off when we got the grant for the new tanker. We, you know, showed that off a little bit. Just showing people what they're paying for, you know, knowing what their large piece of the pie from their township is actually buying them.
Explain to the service life of that stuff, even though it may not have the front costs of purchasing it, you still have the maintenance, inspection, replacement cost, because they've got a limited lifespan.
Well, it, I mean, it's real simple. In 2012, when we did this, the capital improvements plan, we'd bought in, oh, we bought air packs in 2008?
2007.
2007, with the grant, when we bought the first draggers, 2007. We bought 15 air packs, and we bought 32 bottles for $36,000. So, five years later, we're doing this discussion of rural contracts, we're budgeting in there $36,000 for, or actually, I think we budgeted $50,000 for replacing them in 10 years, because they have a 10-year NFPA shelf life. We replaced them in 11 years, because the funds weren't available in 10 years. We went from 15 air packs to 13 air packs, and we went to 24 bottles, and it was $98,000. And we bought the same brand, obviously, new model number, but everything was consistent other than the requirements that NFPA had set, that in order for a company to sell a fire department air packs, they have to meet these NFPA requirements. These requirements keep, you know, increasing the prices on stuff. So, I mean, that's one of the things, you know, we discussed that about how we got a grant in 2012 for $36,000 to buy these, and they almost tripled in cost in four, five years. So, that's one of the things with having the, the meeting and being able to physically show people, you know, that little pile right there is $100,000.
I'm not against a meeting, because I think at a meeting, you can educate people, and when people are educated, they're usually a little more understanding. Even if it affects your pocketbook, you're not gonna go out there maybe singing a song, but you're gonna understand why it's gonna hit you in the pocketbook. So, I'm not against a, a meeting at all. I do think we can move ahead, because they all were told about the 15% plan going through 2020. So, that's not gonna be new, if we agree on that. I mean, I guess we have to first agree that we're not gonna jump up that 32%, so that we can move forward, because we need to get a letter out, because they need to know...
You need to get the contracts out, because they're due back in May.
They, they need to know for their budget process. I mean, they need to be able to budget.
And I think most of their annual meetings is March, is March, so the contracts need to hit the mail sooner than later.
So, we need to make a decision tonight, more or less?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other discussion, or do you need us to make a motion?
But you know what, one more time, so in 2017, you did get 338, because I thought part of this whole thing was that it didn't, probably for the last five years.
It was supposed to be 389. We were at 338.
Okay.
They're between 15 and 16, they paid the same, there was no increase.
Yes, we were, we were behind.
That's where we lost that 15%.
13% is gonna be some like...
Just 389.
If you go to the, the column down...
The lower line, the projected rate.
No, it's 389.
Yep.
Yeah, it'll go up 50, 51 bucks.
So, is that your motion?
Well, now I need to know, okay, so now this is my official, oh, I don't know if I want this to be my first one. Okay, it'll be my first one since I've been talking. I'll make the motion that we, what, go up to the 447 and get back on schedule by pushing it out one year?
389.
Or 3, 389.
And then bumping the end date out.
One year.
One year.
With the understanding that we are not doing this to stay below, to steal any sections from another city or anything like that.
So, do we wanna revise this?
Yeah.
To reflect that, and then have like a resolution at the next meeting?
When do you need to get the contracts out?
Well, for now, we'd be fine, because we have a rate.
Okay.
A motion and a second on a rate. But should we give this to the township, so they know in the future what to look at, or not?
Or, or, we actually have time on that. You get the contracts out for this year, so that's done. And, you know, how it was set up, the letter of intent, that goes out with the return contract, the return signed contract, you could have a letter of intent explaining this year's rate. And at that time, you could also attach the spreadsheet showing, showing the 10-year, the 10-year projection, or the seven-year projection, I guess, whatever, whatever you want me to put on a projection. And then, at that time, I guess, if you wanted to have a, a meeting, or whatever, that would also go on that letter at that time, as to when you were having the meeting and what you wanted to do, or when the budget meetings would be, if you wanted the meeting here, if you wanna do the meeting at the fire station, and go through, you know, costs and hands-on of, of what equipment is, however you guys wanna do that. To me, that would all be done in the, in the letter of intent with the signed contract in May.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that right now, we set the rate at the 338, three, no, 389. Boy, I'm dyslexic or something tonight. At the 389, that's all we need for tonight.
To get the contracts out, they need a, a dollar amount. Whether you're gonna stick with the 338, because there was no letter of intent sent out this year, or whether you're gonna go up. There was no, there was... There was no, there was not a written notification from the city saying that we were increasing the rate this year. Correct?
Correct me if I'm wrong. They were given a copy of this projected rate when we went up with this.
In 2012, there was a complete PowerPoint presentation printed off in a binder that had all the information of how it was arrived, all the figures that, what was, what the formula was about, who supplied the city the formula, and then the baseline of what we, what the city was, had approved to do at that time.
We got a motion.
Is there a second?
I'm thinking that.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks Dale.
Thanks Dale. So, liability coverage? So this is an annual thing we do to waive. Normally, we waive the monetary limits for municipal tort liability. Just something we do every year. This was brought to me by our insurance rep. We need to, we have a resolution? Here's the motion. Just a motion, yeah.
It's an annual, yeah. I'd make a motion to waive the liability coverage if it was a city's issue.
Second that.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries.
Cigarette license for the Tracy liquor store?
I know this was, they weren't sure what was going on in the liquor store back in December, and so they did not renew this. I just wanted to double check. That's still your thoughts.
Has anybody been complaining because they haven't been able to buy anything?
I haven't heard anything.
Have you caught people saying anything else?
I've heard a couple people, but it's just a nominal fee, isn't it, to be able to try?
Hundred and fifty.
And it's not like we lose money selling cigarettes, right?
Yeah. We don't make much.
No, it's, if you look at the margins on the sheet, you'll be able to match the brush for margins. It'd be 150, you can add you a lot of weight, and so. Yeah, cigarettes that were in here.
We have this one here.
Pretty much each other. Those properties.
So that's the exception rates of all?
Yeah.
All these here.
Yeah.
How do they have a thing or they have a dozen?
Well, I don't know if that's leftover inventory of what it is, but.
Must, I think that's their quantity on hand, so just what they had from.
And even the quantity they don't have since they didn't have a license, they can't sell it, so then it's going to just go away.
Is it Sandy's recommendation that she, I mean, she wants to sell cigarettes?
She hasn't said either word. So, it's just something that was brought up and wanted to be discussed after the first year, after we figure out what they're going to do with the liquor store.
What is it, how do you sell that?
Hundred and fifty dollars.
For a year?
Annually, yeah.
Personally, I guess for $150, I mean, that's what, 20, no, not even 20 bucks a month, 12 bucks a month?
Twelve and a half.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, if it gets somebody that if they're in there buying cigarettes, they buy a bottle or a 12-pack, I mean, I think it's pretty minimal if we're trying to make the off-sale work. I think we need to do what we can to get people in.
I'm not opposed to that, but I would like to see the margin brought in line with everything else that they're selling. Maybe raise your prices to make them a lot.
So do we need to make a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we do get the cigarette licenses, whatever.
At the liquor store?
At the liquor store.
With the razor?
With, with the appropriate pricing of them. I don't know what appropriate pricing is, but I would think the lady from Olivia, she helped us set the prices for the booze. I would think she would maybe be able to tell us.
You could even just look what is Casey's charge.
No, no, thank you.
Are they like different, because she's here than there or something?
We could just make sure ours match everybody else's.
They were the lowest, they were the lowest in town before, but I'll second that with the price.
Oh, yes, definitely, same for everybody else. First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries. So now we're under resolutions. We have a resolution for canvassing the February 13th special election.
We just need a motion or that? I'd make a motion to approve resolution in 2018-11 for the canvassing.
I need a second from one of you two.
I was just going to be quiet about it.
Yes, okay. First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Resolution 2018-12 approving payment to Dunick. Any motion for that one?
What's that one? Say it again, sir.
It's just some catch-up. Obviously, they haven't done any work in the last month. The, we couldn't pay him until the change orders were formally approved, so this was some work completed under those change orders. One of them was for, on Center Street, they ran into some poor soils, so we cut out an extra foot and replaced it with sand. And that's after you pay Dunick, the, the county agreed to pay for that, but we're running it through this contract, so invoice the county that, I'll get Shane the exact number, but it was approximately $7,400. Another one was for removal of some debris they found under Hollit. Just a lot of random stuff that we didn't want to bury back under the road that had to be, had to be hauled out, so there's an extra cost for that. And then, the bulk of it was for the sewer and water extension for Fifth Street for the hospice, and that's all assessable back to the, the property owners.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2018-12 payment to Dunick.
I'll second that.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries.
Thank you.
Is both councils payable without breaking?
The new one, the zone one.
What is the resolution?
You need some explanation? Okay. I'll try to, I'll actually try to make this brief. The reason I need the resolution is, is I'm working with the, with Lyon County, and it's called opportunity zones. And that's something you can go into DED, the Department of Employment and Economic Development, DED. So go into that and look at opportunity zones. And in a nutshell, what that is, is there was some tax laws that were changed back in December through President Trump that allows lower to middle income areas or sections, sections of the, of a city or sections of a, of a, of rural America or wherever it might be. But this type of money is sitting out there, and it's investments from investors, and you got to find the investors. But it's money that can come back to those investors if they put the money into low-income areas. So there's things called tracks that are out there, and there's 481 of them in, in the state of Minnesota. And they rank them all, and there's 250 of them that are ranked in the lowest, 250. Tracy and the northern part of Marshall are the only two in Lyon County that hit that. It, it's, it comes from low income, low income housing, low income, just, just what the per capita income would be or family income. This, all this is an application. What, what the resolution is for is so that the council knows about it, the EDA knows about it, so Tony knew about it from this past Wednesday's meeting, and, and Shane does too. But we have to apply for this, so I'll be applying for this with the county commissioners of Lyon County and with the Marshall EDA. Again, in a nutshell, what it does is that if, if we can, and it'll take me going out and finding investors to come in and invest in the city of Tracy, but it's very lucrative what the investors can get back from, from tax breaks and from on capital gains and things for, for what they put into low income, low to mid, middle income housing. It also be housing, and I also found out in the last couple of days, it doesn't just have to be housing, it can be redevelopment of an economic, like, like a main street or something like that, whether it's apartments, whether it's, whether it's businesses that want to move in, there's a, there's, it's, it's diversified. There's no guarantee that we're going to get the 123. Governor Dayton's going to read them all, and he's going to pick out of a, out of the 481, there's going to be 123 tracks that are going to be picked. If they pick the ones from top to bottom or bottom to top everyone will look at, Tracy would be in that. We are one of two tracks. If you look at it, if you go into that website I just gave to you, and there's a map, an interactive map, you can put in there what you're looking at, bottom 250, and then you can actually go in there and go to southwest Minnesota down to Lyon County, and you pop it on there. And the only two places in Lyon County that, that anything pops up for the lowest 250 is from anything north of Highway 23, avoiding all those newer houses out in the Lynn and, and to the south part of, of Marshall. And the other track is directly on Tracy.
So is this one where we get, we can pick and choose wherever, unlike some of the other grants where it's got its couple blocks?
It's not really a grant.
Not a grant at all.
But I mean, the investment, we get to pick and choose.
I have, we have to find them. That will be my job, as I, I plan on going to, they're, they're going to have an investor meeting sometime in April in Minneapolis where you can go and, and you can visit with investors that'll be at their own separate tables, that you can go up, talk to them and say, okay, if you come to Tracy, if, if we're, if we're selected as one of them. But if, if we're selected, you come in and you put up a, I'll just give you an example, an eight-plex, and it is low income housing. There's like two or three things that, that you get to subtract on your taxes, any kind of capital gains that come off of that, as long as you keep them a certain amount of years. It's pretty lucrative. And I will send all that information out to, I think I have to most of you, but you just got to go in there and look at it. I've been in it, I've been 20 hours in the last four days.
And this, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, this is a real cost for us to do this?
Zero.
That's why we hired Jeff to find stuff like this.
Yeah, yeah. And there's, and, and I did a housing study, like I said earlier, and, and the number of houses that we don't have for sale in the city of Tracy, and the number of houses that are empty or will never have anybody in them again, it's, I believe it's, it's critical. It really is. But, and it was nice for me to hear over the past three or four days of digging into it that it's not just the housing market, but you can actually look into somebody investing in a, a company that wants to come to, come to town or, so there's some, there's, and just dig into it a little bit, and it takes some time, but there's some lucrative tax breaks on, for people that'll invest here. But I still got to find the investors, too.
So now you just answered my question, there is a time, like, how long you have to own the property for?
Five, five years was the, well, actually, you know what, it's, it's, look, when you, when you, what I sent you, some of the, the criteria is you got to, you got to put the money into it, into the city, but then after five years, you get another 5% or 10%. It's if you keep it for a certain amount of time, if you put the buildings up, if you put an apartment building up, or if you put an eight-plex, or you put money into the current housing, you're going to get a huge tax break. But then if you keep a hold of those yourself, and after five years, or it's either five or seven years, you get another 5% to 10% back on your investments. So it's lucrative, and, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of people who are going to understand it a heck of a lot better than I'm going to, but it'll also, all this is, the resolution is for me to be able to show you that it exists and that you approve of me going to get it. And I got to work with, with Lyon County Commissioners and the EDA and.
And are these specific investors at all?
No.
Okay.
No.
So I can give my checkbook out?
I've had one call me already. One. On a different subject, but when I told them about this, they were interested in that too. They called me about a different subject. So that's what the resolution is, and then there's a few of you that I sent an email to today, and it's, and it's because I'll be looking for sponsors here in Tracy, people who agree with where the direction I'm going. They were looking for nonprofits, so I sent it to the TDC. They were looking for school superintendent, so Chad Anderson already filled his out and sent back to me, and then I'll send those in. And all that does is show support of, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, I can get a couple names of investors from wherever, whether it's here or outside of the area, that I can have them fill it out to show that we're serious. Because all this is, is an application. And once the application in 2018 goes through, then they'll start, it'll, it'll kick in in 2019. This is one of those things that we talked about before, it's what we do now can help out two, three, four years down the road. Because we have no housing in this town, which will be something that we all have to address pretty quickly. That wasn't a very good explanation of it because you really have to dig into this, but I, I think I sent it to pretty much everybody. But just go into DED, Department of Employment and Economic Development, and then go into opportunity zones, and it'll give you about six different tabs. And there's one of the tabs that has an interactive map, and it'll show you the 491 zones and then the 250 lowest zones. But you just, it's, it's very interactive where you wave your, your cursor over the top of them, it'll show where it's at, and it'll actually show with the, not the ranking, but it'll show you where you, where, where the county might sit as a, as a percentage. Just, just got to read through it. The one in, the two zones in Lyon County is they were, the northern part of Marshall was lower than Tracy was. But that, just to put it into perspective, that was the only two tracks or zones there were, was that one in Marshall and sitting right on the city of Tracy. No country around or anything like that. Any questions you've got for me, all you'd have to do is call me, and if you didn't see it or I didn't get it to you, the, the email, just send me a note and I will send it to you right away. But I'll be putting all together, all the information together over the next couple of days, getting all the people that are going to support it within the city, the nonprofits, the school superintendent, which I've already got, a couple of the business owners, and I'm looking for suggestions on who else we could get to, to support it. Not that they would have to be an investor, but they need to support the reason why we're doing it.
So what, one from the council, be anything that you?
This is your part of it, the resolution that knows you know about it is, is the part from the council. Unless, Mr. Teague, you'd like to write out a check for a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Let me.
Let me get that check.
Let me get Chris and she's got the check.
Okay, but if you need, have anything, just let me know.
Thank you.
Sounds like a great thing. Do you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve resolution 2018-13 in support of Lyon County's opportunity zone application.
I'll second that.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Now should we move on to the consent calendar? What's all, like, you're, beverage unit? We do all with the same calendar, right?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar without breaking the statute, all the other items.
Second it.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries.
I'll do it again.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent, the municipal council payable with breaking the statute.
I'll second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those. Any unfinished, none of new business, there's council communications. We have one to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. Motion carries.